I call this the Lincoln County Board of Commissioners meeting, May nineteenth, two thousand and twenty, to order. At this time, if you would, please answer the roll call.
Second minute. Hang on just a second.
Please answer the roll call as your name is read.
Ready?
Here.
David Sanders.
Here.
Ben Brown. Brady Reviss.
Here.
John Thor.
Here.
Jack Ashley.
Here.
Kate Hewin.
Here.
Mark Mitchell.
Here.
Randy Bradford.
Here.
Charles Hunter.
Here.
Steve Bray.
Here.
Stephanie Britt.
Here.
Shirley Dangerfield.
Here.
Anthony Taylor.
Here.
Doug Cunningham.
Here.
Roger Martinez.
Here.
Cory Young.
Here.
Ricky Bryant.
Here.
Glenn Douglas.
Here.
Dave Guntherberg. Darren Holland.
Here.
Ronald Jean.
Here.
Donnie Ogle. Twenty-one commissioners present, three absent.
Twenty-one present, three absent. Will you recall the three that are absent one more time?
Ben Brown. Dave Guntherberg. And the other name is Commissioner Walker.
All right. Okay. At this time, the invocation will be given by Phyllis Counts and our pledge allegiance by Cole Bradford. If you would, please stand for those present in the room.
Dear Lord, I thank you so much for this day and for the many blessings that you've given us. Mother, I pray that your presence be known in this room tonight and throughout the county as the commissioners join to conduct the business for the citizens of our town. Go with us now through the rest of the evening. Take us all home safely and bring us back at the next appointed time. In Christ's name we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic, the Constitution, the one nation, the God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you. At this time, I would entertain a motion that we operate under the executive order number sixteen. Does anyone need an explanation of that order? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion that we operate tonight under that executive order sixteen.
My commotion will approve.
Okay, and that is Commissioner.
Bradford.
Commissioner Bradford makes motion, seconded by.
Commissioner Hunter.
Commissioner Hunter seconds it. Any questions what we'll be operating under tonight, same as been the last two meetings? We will now have a roll call. Please vote yes if you're in favor of operating under executive order sixteen, no if you disagree with that. Adam Clark.
Steve Graham.
Yes.
David Sanders.
Yes.
Brady Reviss.
Yes.
John Thor.
Yes.
Jack Ashley.
Yes.
Kate Hewin.
Yes.
Mark Mitchell.
Yes.
Randy Bradford.
Yes.
Charles Hunter.
Yes.
Steve Bray.
Yes.
Stephanie Britt.
Yes.
Shirley Dangerfield.
Yes.
Anthony Taylor.
Yes.
Doug Cunningham. Doug Cunningham. Roger Martinez.
Yes.
Cory Young.
Yes.
Glenn Douglas.
Yes.
Darren Holland.
Yes.
Ronald Jean.
Yes.
Donnie Ogle.
Yes.
Doug Cunningham. Ricky Bryant.
Yes.
Cory Young.
She did say yes. Have the three, four. Doug Cunningham, one more time.
Doug, can you hear us? Commissioner Cunningham, can you hear us?
So that would be four. Absent. Twenty. No, I'm sorry. Yeah, twenty.
Yes.
Four.
Okay. There are twenty-four. There are four absent. We will be operating under executive order sixteen. The next thing is announcements. I know we're all saddened by our loss of Commissioner Darren Walker. He was a special person to our county and our community and as how he served us. He served humbly and well and he valiantly fought, you know, his battle with cancer. And he was a gentle man that lived in his community and was well respected and we will miss him. I think everybody got, oh, we emailed out for his procedure. Just go over it real quick. The commission can elect not to fill that position and would be filled at the next general election in August. It falls in a category of being within a hundred and twenty days of the general election. But the commission can fill it and I would suggest that you do because there would be three months there that that position in District One would go unrepresented because it would be represented in the June meeting from election of the new one, the July and August. And the person that wins the election in August then would take the office of the next two years on the first of September. So if y'all have any questions then in the future, what well enough explained and what we sent out, be glad to help you on that. I would entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the April twenty-first, two thousand and twenty meeting, the minutes of the May fifth, two thousand and twenty meeting. If we could combine those, if there's no objection to it, I would entertain a motion to that effect.
My commotion to approve. Commissioner Bradford.
Commissioner Britt.
Commissioner Britt seconds it. Any questions on those minutes as they were printed? If not, please answer the roll call as your name is called.
Graham.
Yes.
Reviss.
Yes.
Thor.
Aye.
Ashley.
Yes.
Hewin.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Hunter.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Britt.
Yes.
Dangerfield.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Here. I'm here.
Okay. Martinez.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Holland.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Ogle.
Yes.
Twenty-one. Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent.
Three absent.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent. The approval of those two meeting minutes is approved. You should have received a monthly committee meeting minutes in your, on your computer. If there's no objection, I would like to take the next three items. I think they're non-controversial. The consideration for approval to reappoint Mark Bolden to the Lincoln County Board of Public Utilities, term expires June two thousand and twenty-three. Then we have a consideration for approval to call for a public hearing June sixteenth, two thousand and twenty, at five-thirty relative to access to public streets or private roads. That's ZR two thousand and twenty dash one. And also call for a public hearing for approval as it relates to fences and walls at that same time, June sixteenth at five-thirty. Any objection to taking those three as one motion for approval? If not, do I have a motion to approve those three items? You read it?
To approve.
Okay. I'm not, I didn't catch what Commissioner made the motion.
Motion to approve. Commissioner Ogle.
Commissioner Ogle makes motion, is seconded by.
Commissioner Dangerfield.
Commissioner Dangerfield seconds it. Any discussion on either of the three items? If not, please answer yes or no when the roll call.
Commissioner Ogle.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Holland.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dangerfield.
Yes.
Britt.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Hunter.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Hewin.
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Thor.
Yes.
Reviss.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent. That was for approving the reappointment of Mark Bolden and calling for the public hearing next month on access to public streets and private roads and about the fences and walls. Now we'll move to the Budget Committee report. Cole Bradford will handle that at this time. Thank you. The Budget Committee of the County Legislative Body of Lincoln County, Tennessee met pursuant to due notice in the auditorium of, at Lincoln Central Academy on May fifth, two thousand and twenty, at six P M. Chairman Graham recognized County Attorney Sims. Commissioner Sims opened the meeting by stating on March twentieth, two thousand and twenty, Governor Bill Lee signed Executive Order sixteen, which suspends the requirements of the Tennessee Open Meetings Act to the extent necessary to allow for business to be conducted by electronic means if deemed necessary to protect the health, safety, and welfare of Tennesseans in light of the COVID nineteen pandemic. The Valley Times Public Notice stated that public access to the meeting will be limited but that the meeting will be either video or audio recorded and the recording of this meeting can be found on the county's website. Mayor Newman took a roll call of the members present. The results of this roll call are below. All members were present. Others present, County Mayor Bill Newman, Finance Director Cole Bradford, County Attorney Ed Sims, County Information Technology Director Matt McAllister, School Technology Supervisor Brad Luna. Item one, County Mayor Newman did not have any additional information to report at this time. And I'm going to note, item two is, was an internal motion by the Budget Committee, so there's no commission action required on those items. I will read them, but again, no commission action required on these, on item two. Finance Director Bradford presented the following FY two thousand and twenty-one school budgets approved by the Board of Education at the May fourth board meeting. No commission action required on these motions at this time. They did present the, they made an internal motion to approve the one forty-one, one forty-three, and the one forty-six amendments to be included in the draft budget. So, item three. Let me, let me, on item three, is there any objection on the revisions and amendments, A through G, that we take them as one item? That's under item three, A through G. There's no objection. Two votes and you will have a vote on, on all of those. Okay. Item three, Finance Director Bradford presented the following items. Fund balance revisions, they're attached. Motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford and passed unanimously by roll call vote to recommend approval of the attached revisions for estimated beginning FY nineteen twenty budget fund balance. Item three B, one-on-one general fund budget amendments attached. Motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Reviss, and passed unanimously by roll call vote to recommend approval of the attached one-on-one general fund budget amendments. Item three C, one sixteen solid waste fund budget amendment. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously by roll call vote to recommend approval of the attached one sixteen solid waste fund budget amendment. Item three D, one thirty-one highway fund budget amendments. Motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, and passed unanimously by roll call vote to reckon, recommend approval of the attached one thirty-one highway fund budget amendments. Item three E, one forty-one general purpose school fund budget amendments attached. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously by roll call vote to recommend approval of the attached one forty-one general purpose school fund budget amendments. Item F, one fifty-one debt service fund budget amendment. Motion by Commissioner Reviss, seconded by Commissioner Dangerfield, and passed unanimously by roll call vote to recommend approval of the attached one fifty-one debt service fund budget amendment. Item G, two thousand and nineteen errors and deletions report. Motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Ogle, and passed unanimously by roll call vote to recommend approval of the attached two thousand and nineteen errors and deletions report. I would entertain a motion at this time of approval of item three, A through G.
I make a motion to approve. Commissioner Young.
Mr. Young makes the motion, seconded by.
Mr. Holland.
Mr. Holland seconds it. Any questions or comments on item three, A through G? If not, please answer yes or no as your name is called on the roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Um, Reviss.
Yes.
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Hewin.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Hunter.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Britt.
Yes.
Dangerfield.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Holland.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Ogle.
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent. Motion passes. Cole? You want to just read this or? Yeah. Okay, item H, and again, this is an information item at this time. USDA lease proposal information, motion by Commissioner Ogle, seconded by Commissioner Reviss, and passed with a roll call vote of five yes, three no, to send this item to the commission as an information item. Item I, purchase leases of laptops, Chromebooks, and accessories for schools. School technology supervisor Luna stated this proposal was for the lease of approximately eighteen hundred Chromebooks for student devices and four hundred and twenty laptops for teacher devices. These devices are replacements for existing leases that expire this summer as well as replacement of some district-owned Chromebooks and laptops. This is not a new money request since these laptops have been a regular budget item since two thousand and thirteen. Motion by Commissioner Bradford, seconded by Commissioner Cunningham, and passed unanimously by roll call vote to concur with the Board of Education's recommendation and recommend approval of the attached proposal to include a three-year fair market value lease on Chromebooks and a four-year fair market value lease on teacher laptops with Lenovo Financial. What's the will of commission on item I?
Do we approve? Commissioner Ogle.
I second that. Commissioner Hewin.
Mr. Hewin seconds as that motion was made by Commissioner Ogle. Any questions or discussions on item three I? If not, please answer yes or no when the roll is called, please.
Commissioner Ogle.
Yes.
Commissioner Jean.
Yes.
Holland.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Dangerfield.
Yes.
Britt.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Hunter.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Mitchell. Commissioner Hewin.
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Thor.
Yes.
Reviss.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Graham.
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent. Motion passes. Is there any objections to the next two, J, which is the purchases at public auction policy and the financial reports that you're saying you did receive those? Any objection or a motion to approve both of those after Cole reads them? Hearing none, Cole, you'll read J and K. Purchases at public auction policy. Motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed unanimously by roll call vote to recommend approval of the attached purchases at public auction policy. Financial reports. Motion by Commissioner Bryant, seconded by Commissioner Bradford, and passed unanimously to my roll call vote to acknowledge receipt of the enclosed financial reports. Alrighty, I'll entertain a motion for item three, J and K together. I'm sorry, I didn't understand who it was.
Reviss.
Mr. Reviss makes the motion.
Ray seconds. Ray seconds.
Commissioner Bray makes the second. Any questions on J or K? Hearing none, please answer yes or no when your name is called on the roll call vote.
Graham.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Reviss.
Yes.
Thor.
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Hewin.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Hunter.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Britt.
Yes.
Dangerfield.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Dunn.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Holland.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Ogle.
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent. Motion passes. Cole, item four, the committee reviewed the following documents relating to the FY two thousand and twenty-one budget. A, review of general fund revenue estimates. B, key revenue trends impacting budget. C, recurring revenues expenditures and fund balance analysis. D, revenue mix analysis. E, consolidated county budget worksheet. And F, enhancement request worksheet. Item G, motion by Commissioner Cunningham, seconded by Commissioner Bryant, and passed unanimously by roll call vote to approve the enclosed FY two thousand and twenty-one draft budget to be presented to the commission on Tuesday, May nineteenth, and published in the newspaper on Wednesday, May twentieth, for the public hearing scheduled for Tuesday, June second, at six P M. The draft budget is a base budget that includes no enhancements due to uncertainty with revenues. The committee plans to monitor revenues monthly with the understanding that budget adjustments can be made once the county has a better grasp on the financial impact of the pandemic over the next several months. Board of Education took this same approach and approved the status quo budget with no enhancements at this time. No requi, no commission actions required on this. This is just an information item to the commission and the meeting was adjourned. Okay. Correct me if I'm wrong on the revision. The budget was published in today's paper. There will be a public hearing prior to next month's Budget Committee. The Budget Committee will vote again on it or is approved, and then it goes before the full commission or approval or whatever adjustments that they would like to make at that time at the June meeting. Correct. Okay. Everybody understand?
Yes.
Alrighty. Uh, next item, no republics.
Dana Marie Gentry by Commissioner Cunningham. Stacey Hagie by Commissioner Hunter. Susan Campbell by Commissioner Bradford. Natalie Kidd by Commissioner Thor. Nancy Porter by Commissioner Mitchell. Marsha Rhodes and Adrienne Bonneville by Commissioner Bray. Delisa Reed by Commissioner Ogle. Tammy Rolls Painter by Commissioner Young.
Any additions to that list?
Yes, this is Commissioner Graham. Add Linda Vance.
Linda Vance.
Yes, thank you.
Any additions? I'd entertain a motion for approval of that list then.
I make a motion. Mitchell.
Okay, Mitchell. Commissioner Mitchell.
Second by Commissioner Bradford.
All in favor of approval, please say aye. Whoops, I got new call. Hold on. I'm getting anxious, y'all. If you, if you bore them, vote yes when your name is called.
Commissioner Graham.
Yes.
Sanders.
Yes.
Reviss.
Yes.
Thor.
Yes.
Ashley.
Yes.
Hewin.
Yes.
Mitchell.
Yes.
Bradford.
Yes.
Hunter.
Yes.
Bray.
Yes.
Britt.
Yes.
Dangerfield.
Yes.
Taylor.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Martinez.
Yes.
Young.
Yes.
Bryant.
Yes.
Douglas.
Yes.
Holland.
Yes.
Jean.
Yes.
Ogle.
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent. Twenty-one, yes, three absent. They are approved. Uh, the floor is now open for any new business that you would like to bring before the commission.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Hewin would like to speak on behalf of the law enforcement, please.
Okay, Commissioner Hewin, you are recognized.
Thank you. In your packets, you received the bids concerning the pursuit vehicles for the sheriff's department and the sheriff's recommendation. Freeland is the lowest bid, but they will have to order new vehicles at this time due to the shutdown of GM in the past months. No delivery date available for the future. Brandon Motors has five vehicles in stock. The cars are priced higher than Freeland. Typically, this body will select a lower of the two bids, but Freeland doesn't meet the specifications of having vehicles in stock. Also, no new monies will be needed for these vehicles for Brandon Motors due to the fact we already appropriated adequate funding in the sheriff's department budget. So, Mr. Chairman, I am making a motion to reject the low bid that didn't meet the requirements for vehicles to be in stock that was necessary and go with a higher bid from Brandon Motors that did meet the requirements so that sheriff's department can have vehicles in a timely manner. Thank you.
Do I hear a second for that motion?
I, Commissioner Taylor, I second that motion.
Commissioner Taylor makes the motion. Motion is it will be purchased those vehicles from Brandon Motor Company uh, because they can uh, deliver immediately. Uh, and uh, if you will, if there's any questions, we'll entertain those at this time. The sheriff is in the room here. If you got any questions, ask him. Hearing none, please answer yes or no uh, to the roll call vote.
Commissioner Ogle?
Yes.
Jean?
Yes.
Holland?
Yes.
Douglas?
Yes.
Bryant?
Yes.
Young?
Yes.
Martinez?
Yes.
Cunningham?
Yes.
Taylor?
Yes.
Dangerfield?
Yes.
Britt?
Yes.
Ray?
Yes.
Hunter?
Yes.
Bradford?
Yes.
Mitchell?
Yes.
Hewin?
Yes.
Ashley?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.
Revis?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Graham? Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent.
Twenty-one, yes, three absent. Motion passes. Any other new business? Chairman, uh, Doug Cunningham. Was that a motion to adjourn? It cut out, Commissioner Cunningham. That is correct. Motion to adjourn, Mr. Chairman. Alrighty, do we have a second?
A second, Mitchell.
Commissioner Mitchell makes it. We will now have a roll call vote for his adjournment. A yes vote would be a motion, would be an agreement on adjourning this meeting.
Commissioner Graham?
Yes.
Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Revis?
Yes.
Thor?
Yes.